Chair sees a quorum and calls this meeting of the Whitestown Town Council to order at 7:04. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Councilman Worrell.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Baum.
Howdy.
Councilwoman Austin.
Present.
Councilman Wosick.
Here.
All right, thank you, everyone. As I talked about last week, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance a little different. Our PR team has put together a compilation of some of the children of Whitestown doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please stand with me and then we'll let the video play and then when the video is over, we'll come back to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
And the reason why.
For everything.
Justice.
For all.
All right, thank you, everyone. And real quick, before we get to the agenda, I do want to make an announcement. As some of you may know, Jason Lawson, our town manager, will not be on the call this evening. He is dealing with a family emergency, so we wish him well and our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family as they get through the rest of the day. And so if you have any questions for him, I'd say please direct them to him after the meeting, but we've got Nathan here to answer any questions that come up that Jason would normally handle. With that, are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda at this time?
Mr. President, I make a motion. We adopt the agenda as presented.
All right, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
I've got a motion, a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 My fault. Apologies to everyone. I am really trying to get this back all in person again. As per the government's executive order and the guidance we've received, all these votes need to be done by roll call. So, Mr. Sumner, I apologize. Please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, five to nothing. Thank you so much, everyone. Next, move on to Clerk Treasure's report. Are there any questions on the Clerk Treasure's report as we have no presentations for this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the department reports. Do any council members have questions for department heads on the reports that they submitted? All right, seeing none, Nathan has let me know that we have a member of the public that has requested to speak on a non-agenda item. So as per our practice, we will allow that at this time.
This time.
Say what?
That member is not present online at this time.
Not on fire tablet?
Unless they are the fire tablet. If that is the fire tablet, if they could send me a message to let me know.
I'm looking at the video feed. I think it's the fire tablet.
Okay.
Cheryl, if it's Cheryl.
I think so. At least that was the email that I reviewed.
I'm unmeeting now. I'll rename that.
All right, and then as per standard practice, you have three minutes to give your comments on a non-agenda item. Please state your name for the record.
Hey, guys, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Cheryl Hancock, 5400 East, 300 South in Whitestown. I have a couple of things on non-agenda items, some that you could probably really easily clear up really fast. 500 East, is it going to open? I know when the marketing team or PR team had put out the original closure notice that it's supposed to open tomorrow, trying to find out if that is still going to happen or if it's been delayed, if we know. My next question on a non-agenda item, which I thought was on the agenda item, was the Fishback Creek ERA taken off the agenda for tonight? Because I don't see it on the one that's on the website. Okay. And then the only other thing I have for non-agenda items is when does the town think they're going to be opening up the meetings back to actually in-person public? I know the county has been doing it. I've spoken to the county officials. They have been doing it for a couple of months. I spoke to the London Mayor's Office. They have also been open for a couple of months. Zionsville has also been open for the last two months. Zionsville does do in-person. And they also give the public the option for a Zoom dial-up. So right now, Whitestown is still the only town in the county not open to actual public meetings, public in-person people. So if you could answer that would be also wonderful.
All right, thank you so much. As far as 500 East reopening, I will make sure to have the Public Works Department look into that and get back to you on the timeline so that you have all that information. We will make sure that residents are fully informed on that. And then as far as the in-person meetings, as everyone may have seen today, we have seen numbers in the state of Indiana for positivity rate, for cases, and for the hospital usage rates. All of the main items that the governor has been reviewing have been going in the wrong direction, to the point where the governor has extended his executive order and we now have several more weeks of a mandatory mask order. Additionally, Whitestown has had the fewest number of COVID positive tests in all of our population. And I can say that because we had one individual actually test positive on town staff and that person was exposed on their vacation and not during any type of a town event or during their shift. So what we've been working on is trying to protect our employees and the public. One thing that I will reference is some municipalities that are having in-person meetings are only in-person. And Brownsburg is a good example, where they have put limits and caps on the number of people that can attend their meetings. Whereas when you have a meeting in this kind of technology, in this type of avenue, we're able to have unlimited number of people join us on the Zoom calls and be able to be a part of the meeting and participate without having to go through social distancing because everyone is participating from their own home. So I have instructed Nathan and Jason to work on, for a future state, a way that we can come back to meeting in-person and having that Zoom option so that we can return to some sense of normalcy. But until the, as the cases have been going in the wrong direction, quite frankly, for the last couple of months, it has been a concern of mine to make sure that we protect our public while being as open as possible. And from my perspective, having Zoom and the ability to have everyone on these calls from wherever they are and able to join us from is the best way to do that while keeping in mind public health. So thank you again so much for joining us this evening and for your comments. Is there anyone else that has comments on non-agenda items? Nathan, have you received any feedback?
No, I've not received any additional feedback.
Right. So then we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. And if I'm correct, Nathan, we had someone that wanted to speak on one of the items in the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Correct. Cheryl has also requested to speak on an item there.
Again, three minutes?
Not for me. Oh, it won't take three minutes, I promise. Just a question and then a side comment. Are the two, are these two parcels, are they two separate parcels? Are they like side by side? It's really hard to tell by the exhibit exactly where the parcels are. I don't know. I think they're, I'm assuming they're around the rail trail. It's kind of what it looks like, but we're not 100% sure. And in doing so, you can tell it looks like obviously the town will take care of these two parcels after tightening, so it's in the consent agenda. It makes some of us that live on the other side of town that's going to be dealing with Mr. Hockett come Monday with his rezone, this makes it look really, really fishy and really washy to some of us that the town is taking in these properties for $10 apiece. Is what the Quick Claim deed shows, is the amount of exchange is only $10 in lieu of him possibly getting a rezone come next week. So just something to kind of keep in mind going forward was all I wanted to, to like. But if you could answer the question about if they're side by side, if they're two separate parcels? Because acreage, it looks like they're two separate parcels. So that was all.
So then let me provide some clarification. This is a land swap, if you will. So what is happening is the town has 1.74 acres of land on one part of our parcel. During a survey, we were able to determine when we were getting ready to put some fencing in, because this is actually down by the water treatment plant. And what's happening is there is a fence that was built and is not on the land in which the town currently owns. It's on Danny Hockett's land at 1.74 acres. So what we're doing is we're having an even number of acreage for an even, for the same dollar amount, that $10 apiece. They pay 10, we pay them 10. It is a sum-zero transaction so that we can then clean up that property piece. We take care of the parcel that currently has our fence on, as we have been doing. And then that other 1.74 acres is now a part of that landowner's piece. So that we can clean up who had what parcels of property as we're making those improvements. And that's something that, you know, when we're going through and working with the surveyor on different projects, has come up from time to time and comes up with transactions between neighbors when they are trying to get their driveways redone or put up a new fence and the surveyor comes out and they find out that this has always been, isn't actually on the property. So now we have to have a discussion on where defenses go and how do we do that? So this was a way in which we had no impact to anyone around there, and this is a cleanup transaction. So thank you so much for taking a look.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other individuals from public that wish to speak on the consent agenda? All right. What is the will of the council on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, which includes Item A, the approval of meeting minutes from September 9, 2020. B, claims, September 2020 expenses, towns, September 2020 revenues, towns, September utility claims, which also include water operating and wastewater operating. C, approval of Park's credit card limit raise. D, approval of road closure permit for October 24th for the Park's Halloween event. E, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 81,000 for purchase of a medium-duty dump truck and plows. F, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 43,000 for HWC for community crossings, 2020-2 contract. G, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000, except an approval of apparent low bid for the signal at State Road 267 and Indianapolis Road. H, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 135,000, the Axon Patrol car cameras. I, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 31,800, the Heartreach medical equipment. J, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 7,200, department training and manuals. It's for police. K, consider expenditure exceeding 5,000 not to exceed 34,300, helmets and vest purchase. L, author ID transfer with Hockett Real Estate LP. M, contract with Duke to use their corner lot for Park's Halloween event. N, approval of REED engagement letter for the RDC ban. O, approval of REED engagement letter, land acquisition study. P, resolution concerning interest in acquiring property for I-65 utility relocations. That's Resolution 2020-16.
All right, I've got a motion. I will second the motion. Is there further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion is adopted, five to zero, to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move to unfinished business. Item A, this is the second read and consider adoption of the 2020-2021 Budget Ordinance, Ordinance 2020-24. Before I read the title of the ordinance, Nathan, we also have a request to speak on this agenda item, correct?
Correct. Cheryl should be unmuted now.
I am, thanks. I just have one question as far as the budget goes. Jason was kind enough after last month's meeting to send me, I had requested a line-by-line breakdown of the budget for this coming year, which he was kind enough to send me. Because normally, you guys normally have that in the meeting documents. There was one last year, so I asked for that. He did send that to me. The one question, and I did send this back to him as a concern, was that per the budget line item that he sent to me for next year, it states budget form, budget estimate for year 2021, it's got the town court still listed under the budget for over $108,000. Seems how there is no town court. You guys dissolved that. Why are we asking for money to be put into an account that is no longer active at all?
As everyone may know, thank you, Cheryl, for the question about the town court. As everyone may know, there's been some recent changes with our town court. And when we had advertised the budget and we're putting these figures together, we need to make sure we had a placeholder because as there was an investigation still ongoing that we weren't able to discuss, we didn't know what costs may come from that or what things we need to do as a part of that investigation. And now that that has moved from investigation phase into the court phase, we still are unsure what may come from that. So we don't want to have to eliminate line items that we may need to utilize depending on what could come up. We're just trying to be prepared for that. My hope and goal is that this is wrapped up in the following years. We've been dealing with this for almost two years now, both internally and externally. So my hope is that this is wrapped up in that time period so that for the 2022 budget, we can zero those out from a budget perspective, but there is no plans to use those unless needed and necessary in regards to that litigation. And because it is a court case, that's about all we can say about it, and I don't want to get too much further into it because of all those reasons. So, but again, the question for looking over the document.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion, comments, questions, concerns on Ordinance 2020-24, which is an ordinance or resolution for appropriation and tax rates? Seeing none, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2020-24. Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, I've got a second from Councilman Miller. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. The ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing on the Geo Bonds Appropriation Ordinance. So I will open the public hearing at 7:22 PM for the Geo Bonds Appropriation Ordinance, Ordinance 2020-22. Is there anyone, Nathan, that has reached out to you and requested to speak on this ordinance?
No, there is not.
All right. Any requests coming in? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion to close the public hearing? All right, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Public hearing is closed at 7:24 PM. Next, we move on to Item C, the second read and adoption of ordinance Geo Bonds. This is Ordinance 2020-22, Appropriation Ordinance, Town of Whitestown, Indiana, General Obligation Bonds. I would make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2020-22.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on the adoption of the ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I do appreciate that. The ordinance is adopted, five to zero. And this is the fourth or fifth time we've talked about this particular, this particular infrastructure project. So again, I really appreciate it. I think this will be a great addition to our community, a good safety feature. And being able to fund this in this particular mechanism is several years ahead of where we thought we were going to be. So again, our prudent financial planning and the way that development has come together for the town has allowed us to improve these things. And I really look forward to the study that comes back from HJC about other potential intersections that we can make safer through this type of process. So thank you all. With that, we'll move to the new business agenda, Item 8A. This is a public hearing on the additional appropriation ordinance. This is Ordinance 2020-25. I will open the public hearing at 7:25. And then, we have, we had someone signed up to speak in this as well, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, just a quick question, counsel. It looks like, the only question I have is where is the money coming from and where is it being, like what part of the budget? Because all it says is other services and charges is where it's coming from, and it's going back into other services and charges. So if you could just clarify what that money, where it's coming from, where it's going to, and what it's for, please.
So what I'll do is I'll talk about what this money is for. And what we're doing is this is for costs that have been incurred as part of that investigation I spoke to earlier. This is part of the legal and accounting fees that were above the normal operating work of our teams as part of that investigation. And I really can't give you a lot of timelines. It's about when those were currently. Once the court side of that process works its way through, then it'll be a lot more information that we can give out. But we don't want to prejudice any type of legal proceedings, but that is what it is for. That's why those costs have come up. Those are for legal and accounting fees and service charges that we incurred in correlation with that investigation. And to your question about where it came from, amount requested, amount approved, this is an additional appropriation. This is appropriating what will be a mixture of what we're going to call non-budget revenue, right? When we make our budget in the beginning, that budget is based off of cash on hand. It's based on forecasted revenues. Our revenues are outpacing where we projected them to be, so we have some excess revenues that we can then use to cover this appropriation.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time, Nathan?
No, not on this item.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing, seeing no public to speak?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
Thank you all. That public hearing is closed at 7:28. Next, we'll move on to Item 8B to consider that ordinance. And so this is additional appropriation ordinance number 2020-25. I would actually make a motion that we suspend the rules so we can adopt this ordinance this evening.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, motion is adopted, five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Rules are suspended. I'll read for a second time, additional appropriation ordinance number 2020-25. I would make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2020-25.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on the additional appropriation ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion adopted, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Item C, the Abatement Resolution for GDI Coke Call, Resolution 2020-15. Nathan, has anyone signed up to speak on this one?
No, sir.
All right.
All those here, if you had questions, but there's no one. Unless you have questions for them, they are, do have representation.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the council have questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, is there any discussion on the resolution? All right. Resolution 2020-15, a resolution of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, declaring a second enlargement of the Whitestown Fishback Creek ERA number one and approving applications for real and personal property tax abatement. This is GDI Holdings LLC, real, CC-BCC Operations LLC, personal. All right, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-15.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All right, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, five to zero. Resilience adopted. Thank you, everyone. Next, move on to Item D, Consider a Transfer Appropriation Ordinance, Ordinance 2020-27. All right, Transfer Appropriation Ordinance, number 2020-27. This is increased appropriation for Clerk Treasure Department, Personal Services, 3,000, and decreased appropriation from Other Services and Charges, 3,000. Any questions on this transfer for the Clerk Treasure? All right, with that, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules for adoption this evening.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, rules are suspended. I'll read for a second time. Transfer of Appropriation Ordinance, Ordinance 2020-27. And I would make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2020-27.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Next, Resolution Authorizing Excess Levy Appeal, Resolution 2020-27. Petition to appeal for an increase above the maximum levy. All right. I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2020-17.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Baum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin.
Yes.
Councilman Wosick.
Yes.
All right, motion is adopted, five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Next, this is to consider the Street Cut Ordinance, Ordinance 2020-26. This is Ordinance 2020-26, an ordinance regulating street cuts. Jason brought this to me, and this is something where we're going through the process of having a new interchange put in. We're redoing Exit 133 as an interchange, and we've got, you know, conversations happening with NDOT as always to help us continue on Exit 130 and some of the things going on there. And with some of the development that's happening, we're putting in new roads and new infrastructure throughout different parts of town. And so he's been talking to me about how can we formalize the informal conversations and policies we've had on putting street cuts on different streets, especially some of our major roads, as we're starting to really backfill in some of our minor roadways throughout the town. So this is similar to some ordinances in surrounding communities and that helps to set forth, like this is what the expectation is for street cuts. And I thought this would be something that once we get this on the books, then if anyone comes to us asking for street cuts, then we have this and we point to and say, this is our policy. This is where we stand. And so it doesn't have to be informal conversations and that folks know upfront where we are. So that's where, that's some of the history and some of the places where this comes from. So that's where, that's some of the history and some of the places where this comes from.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance number 2020-26 this evening.
Alright, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Motion's adopted five to zero. Rules are suspended. Ordinance number 2020-26 and ordinance regulating street cuts.
Make the motion, we adopt ordinance number 2020-26.
Alright, I've got a motion, and I will second the motion. Is there further discussion? Alright, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, motions adopted five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Alright, moving on to the next part of our agenda. This is item G, rezone of Commerce Park, ordinance 2020-28. Ordinance 2020-28 and ordinance amending zoning maps within the zoning ordinance of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana. Zoning maps amendments PC 20-034-ZA. And then Nathan, I believe we have representatives from Strategic Capital Partners and the landowners that they're working with on the call. If we have any questions, is that accurate and correct?
Correct.
Alright. Any questions from the council on this zoning, this rezone request? Alright, Nathan, anyone from, Nathan, anyone on the public to discuss?
No, I've not received any comment at this time.
An apologies, everyone. My computer all of a sudden said my internet connection was not usable, and I thought I was about ready to freeze and drop the call, so I got a little bit scared there, but we're all good. So with that, this is a zoning ordinance, so it does not take two reads, so it can be adopted tonight. Therefore, I will offer a motion to approve ordinance 2020-28. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on the rezon? Hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion's adopted five to zero. Alright, next couple of resolutions, the next two items on the agenda are items that I enjoy us doing. This is where we have different assets, different pieces of property that we have taken through the useful life to us, but it still has some use left in those particular items, and we're able to share those with other units and members of our larger community. So I'm glad that we're able to do that today. So with that, let us discuss resolution 2020-18, a transfer of asset resolution with the Advance Police Department. So a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana, for the transfer of personal property to the Town of Advance, Indiana Police Department.
Mr. President, on behalf of the Police Commission, I and the Town Council, I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2020-18.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, motion adopted five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to item I, consider a transfer of asset resolution with the Boone County Prosecutor's Office, resolution 2020-19. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana, for the transfer of personal property to the Boone County Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. President, on behalf of the Whitesun Police Commission and for the Town Council, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2020-19.
Alright. I've got a motion, and I will second it. Is there further discussion? Nathan? Never mind. Um, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright. Next item on our agenda is item J, consider an ordinance correcting the 2020 salary ordinance concerning Task Force One, ordinance 2020-29. As you all know, the Fire Department has several members that rotate through on Task Force One, the Indiana group of first responders that gathers together and trains on higher level trainings, and they are able to then, when disasters happen across the country, be dispatched to help in those situations. We've had multiple of our staff members be called into service so far this year and in prior years in hurricane relief efforts. And I know that we have, have the Fire Chief, Chief Westrich, on right now, and he was one of those members that was called away earlier this year. So what this does, it just goes to clean up that language to make sure that we're all on the same page, and the language has the intent, was intended from when we adopted this ordinance last year. So that is just, it is some technical corrections and cleanup work. And this is ordinance 2020-29 and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana, correcting ordinance 2019-29, 2020 salary ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second read of ordinance number 2020-29.
Alright, I'll second the motion. We've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on suspending the rules for this item? Hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Motion's adopted, rules are suspended, ordinance 2020-29 and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana, correcting ordinance 2019-29, 2020 salary ordinance. I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2020-29.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion's adopted five to zero. Now we've come to the last part of our new business agenda, item K. This is a resolution concerning health emergencies. As you all know, right before, right when we were starting to see that things were happening after the first cases had started to pop up in Indiana, we passed a resolution that allowed for us to be flexible with how we operate our business and to allow us to get through what was happening with COVID. But at the time, we didn't know what that meant. We didn't know what the future looked like. We had very little information about how the pandemic would operate, what would happen, where we would be. So what we've done is we've looked at that enabling resolution that we had, and we've made some adjustments to it. A couple of things I'll highlight is you'll notice that there was the ability for the municipal executive to issue a travel ban for longer than the seven days already allowed for in-state statute, and the council was giving pre-approval to that. So we've, we've removed that and went back to the statutory outline of that seven-day period. And what I mean by that is that the executive can issue a travel ban that can do it for no longer than seven days without getting council approvals. We've removed that, as we've now learned more about how the pandemic are operating, how the virus is operating. Additionally, we've made some technical corrections throughout the ordinance and some of the places that were left and restated, some of the things it was, it was doing. And we have removed employees' abilities to work from home outside of what was already allowed for in the employee handbook. So on that one, we again went back to the handbook, and we're working within the confines of what we already had established as our town policy on that. So now that we've got a better handle on our operations, how if we keep things flowing, we're going to, we're going to pull back on some of those strings and go back to kind of that factory reset for some of those. But other pieces, we're going to need to keep going. One, a couple of the items are going to be some of the prepaid claims and the deposits. The Governor's Executive Order has waived the statute that requires ISB deposited by the end of the next business day once you receive those monies into government unit, both state, local, and all those in between. And continue for that to be as guide, as we've received guidance from State Board of Accounts being that, you know, two days a week. And so that's something we'll continue to use with the flexibility that is necessary during this health emergency. As I referenced at the beginning of the meeting, we're still under that emergency. The Governor's Executive Order will extend that for a longer period of time. In addition to the mandate, the public health emergency will be extended as well. So as long as we're in this situation, we will continue to be as safe as possible and continue to protect our employees while getting the business done as we have been doing. So that's where this comes from. So resolution 2020-20, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitesun, Indiana, concerning emergency powers. Is there further discussion on this resolution?
Mr. President, I think this is a great resolution. We took a lot of learnings from the previous one. As we, as you said, we learned what the virus is doing, but this also sets us up for anything else that might come our way, whether it's health or weather or anything like that. So it's definitely forward-thinking. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your assistance and help on it, councilmen. So with that, I would offer a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-20.
I'll second.
A motion, and Rob seconding?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, everyone. And do we have any other business to come before us this evening from the council? Alright, seeing none, thank you, everyone, for being with us, and I hope that by the time we have our next meeting, I will be coming to you probably from home, and I will be a little tired as hopefully by then, we have Bomb Boy Number Five joining us. We don't want him to be none too late. So I look forward to seeing everyone then, and please apologize in advance if I don't have my normal chipperness after not sleeping for all that time. So thank you all. I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.